will be evoked against you and your team. It is on behalf of this committee, my belief that you will not choose to mislead this committee. You will share with us facts that will help us to come up with a good report before the main house. Town clerk, this committee is merely asking points of clarification, points of clarifications on various queries raised by the Auditor General's office. I want to emphasize, we are going to ask clarifications pertaining to the report, your report, town clerk, that has come from you arising from what the auditors raised about the management of the enhanced CDF by Lusaka City Council in the seven constituencies of our greater city of Lusaka. With that said, I would like to appeal to you to become relaxed. You are not in the court. We are merely asking for information where there will be need for certain officers to come and help you, even those who are not here. That will be said so that we can clear the issues raised by auditors. With that said, I would like to ask you, our town clerk, to introduce yourself in person and also ask your colleagues to individually do the same. As for our officers who are behind there, you can walk towards our chief, our deputy comsec, local government service commission. When your time comes, you can one by one go there and introduce yourselves. As for those who are around the table, you have your microphones near you. These are flexible microphones. You can pull them closer because this committee is live on TV and radio. So the radio people would like to get your name, to get your responses or clarifications. With that said, once again, welcome and you can introduce yourself.
Thank you so much, Chair. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, honourable members.
Morning.
Morning, other permanent witnesses. My name is Lifterindawa, Town Clerk, Lusaka City Council.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Victor Chaวงa, Director Engineering Services for Lusaka City Council.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Begichanda, Director City Planning. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, honourable members. My names are Francis Perry, Director Finance, Lusaka City Council.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, honourable members. My name is Bichis Ngambi, Chief Internal Auditor. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairperson. Good morning, honourable members of this committee. Good morning, everyone. My name is Kabkabos Kivale, Director Legal Services for Lusaka City Council.
Good morning, Chair and your committee. My name is Sifaya Mainga, Assistant Director of Finance, Technical Services. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members. My name is Victor Kabwe, Chief Accountant, Lusaka City Council.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'm Rachel Daga, Assistant Director Engineering Services.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Kanungo Joseph, Head Procurement Officer, Lusaka City Council.
Thank you. Head of Office, starting with my left here.
Good morning, Lusaka City Council. Good morning, honourable members of parliament. My names are Evelyn Mutandwa, Director in Charge of Lusaka Provincial Audit Office. Thank you.
Behind you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, honourable members of parliament. Good morning, town clerk and your team. My name is Edna Peary, Senior Auditor, Lusaka Province Audit General's Office.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, everyone. My name is Moenyanachidima, Senior Auditor from Lusaka Province.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, honourable members. Good morning, Lusaka City Council. My name is Moses Lukwesa, Auditor from the Office of the Auditor General.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Good morning to you and good morning, everyone. My name is Lavinda Sinyani from the Planning and Research Department in the Office of the Auditor General. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair, and good morning, everyone. My name is Mumbasaka from the Ministry of Finance and National Planning, Office of the Accountant General. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members of the committee. Good morning, Lusaka City Council. My name is Hjulia Davies, Assistant Director, Local Authority Department, Midsover Finance Audit Division. And you are welcome.
Thank you, Chairperson, and good morning to you and the honourable members of your committee and the good morning fellow permanent witnesses. Welcome, Lusaka City Council, to your session. I'm Kazinga Kennedy from Minister of Local Government and Road Department. Thank you.
Thank you, honourable Chairperson, and good morning. Good morning to all honourable members of parliament. Good morning to all you distinguished ladies and gentlemen. My name is Simkonda Shadzek. I'm a Deputy Commission Secretary, Local Government Service Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Simkonda. Now we can have the clerk's office.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Rachel Chilashere from the Clerk's Office.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning. My name is Maxwell Chaka from the Office of the Clerk.
Good morning, honourable Chairperson. Good morning, honourable members. Our permanent witnesses, good morning to you. TC and your team, good morning. I am Chidimbo Elijah from the Office of the Clerk of National Assembly. And TC and your team, you are welcome. Thank you so much, Chairperson.
Thank you. Honourable members of parliament, starting with the honourable member for Lusakiri.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good morning to you. Morning, honourable members. Good morning, permanent witnesses, Lusaka City Council. Good morning and welcome to the Committee on Local Government Accounts. Kalobopavuma is my name. I represent the good people of Lusakiri constituency, Kitwe, in the copper belt.
Thank you.
Chair, good morning to you and to the rest of the House. Our witness, Lusaka City Council, you are welcome to your committee. I am your humble servant, Mutelo Mishek, MP for Mitete. Sir, I have a witness in the team that I'm a humble servant. One is a witness to me. Like the Chair has said, let's take it easy. You are not in court. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Singombe.
Chair, thanks so very much and good morning to you. Good morning, fellow honourable members. Good morning, our secretariat. Good morning, our permanent witnesses. Lusaka City Council, good morning and you are welcome. I'm Dr. Singombe, representing the people of Dundumwez. Thank you.
Siabunga.
Chairperson, I thank you. Good morning, permanent witnesses. Morning, Lusaka City Council. Good morning, colleagues. My name is Mulunda Darius, Member of Parliament for Siabunga constituency. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, honourable Mulunda. Your mic can be off now. Yeah, I'm happy for you. Town clerk, my name is Mishek.
There are two members there also.
You are from which constituency?
Honorable Chairperson, thank you very much and good morning, Chairperson. Good morning, my honourable members of parliament. Good morning, our permanent witnesses and good morning, Lusaka City Council. My name is Elek Kamondo. I represent the good people of Mofonbe. Thank you very much.
That is one of our members, very active member, wherever he is, even if he is not physically around, he participates, so take note. There are other members who are also joining us, two or three, they will be joining us shortly. My name is Mishek Muteetwa Nyambose, representing the wonderful people of Chasefu constituency in eastern province of Zambia. And I'm privileged to chair this committee, your committee, town clerk. I would appeal to you. Message from the radio is that you pull your mic closer to you and speak a bit audible so that we are followed by the people of Lusaka, the people of Zambia, as to how the money given to them by the humble president has been utilized under your charge. With that said, I would like to ask you to take us through your memorandum.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Sorry, maybe before we go to the detail, we had some preliminary issues or some amendments given to us. It is if that allow me to take you to page thirty-two, is it page thirty-two? Page twenty-two first. We go to page twenty-two. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes, page twenty-two. The query on the management of secondary schools and skills basaris, are we there? Fifty-one point eight. Payment of skills training to unregistered institution. This matter, TC, has been resolved. Take note. So when you come to this point, note that the matter has been rested. Then the other query is on thirty-two? Yes, on page thirty-two, TC and team, payment of loans to beneficiaries not on the approved list. Take note when you reach this stage or this page. The query pertaining to Kawata constituency particularly, only Kawata out of the seven constituencies on this query has been resolved. Only Kawata. The other six constituencies, we shall need to interrogate as to why payment of loans were done to beneficiaries which were not on the initial approved list by the committees. So note that it's only Kawata whose case has been rested by the other six are still outstanding and we shall have to get responses from you. With that said, town clerk, I may allow you now to take us through your report.
Thank you so much, Chair. First query is delayed submission of proposed projects by the CDF committee. Cause of query, management regrets that the implementation of the CDF was delayed in the year 2022 due to the delay in the submission of projects by the WGC as well as the late launch of the new CDF guidelines in February 2022, which ultimately committed in the late submission of community projects to the CDF committee. Action taken, management wishes to report that the submissions of community projects have been aligned according to the CDF guidelines, which stipulate that the submission must be made not later than the first quarter of each year. Remedial measure, management will ensure that in order to avoid potential delays in the submission of projects, it has subsequently instituted the following strategic measures: prompt advertisement regarding to community projects adhering to submission deadlines and ongoing monitoring of projects. Kanyama, delayed completion of projects 2021 and 2023, completion of classroom block at Twashuka Primary School. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to state that the contract extension documents were regrettably not avowed in a timely manner to the Office of the Auditor. Action taken, management wishes to report that the project has since been completed and remedal measure, management will ensure that the information flow to the auditor is avowed to them on a timely basis. Then we have construction of garbage bay at New Saweto. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to report that the cause of the query was as a result of notification received from the contractor that there was cholera outbreak as well as flooding on the site due to blockages of drainages during the execution of the contract, which led to an extension. Action taken, management wishes to report that the project has since been completed and we have Appendix B to show the progress. Remedial measure, management will continue to adhere to CDF management systems to improve efficiency, streamline processes and prevent future delays in implementation. Construction of a shredder shelter at Mobile Market. Cause of query, management wishes to report that the delay in the completion of the project was due to community through the CDF of Kanyama, who requested for change of project size from an initial dimension of nine meters by twenty-eight meters, which was increased to nine by fourteen meters, leading to an extension of contract duration. Action taken, management wishes to report that the market structure has since been roofed. The concrete counters have been constructed. The project is complete and currently under the defects habilit period. Remedial measure, management is committed to enhancing the CDF management system to improve efficiency and streamline processes and prevent future delays in implementation. Chawama constituency, restored project, the application of Christian Temple Road. Cause of query, management wishes to report that it was regretted by the contractor, Mukoma Investment, had abandoned the site despite having received warning letters and did not complete the works as stipulated in the contract. Action taken, management has terminated the contracts from Koma and Mta Kaso General Dealers was engaged to complete the remaining works, of which the ten meter stretch has been paved and drainage works are completed. The project is now complete and under the defects habilit period. Remedial measure, management is committed to enhancing CDF management systems to improve efficiency, streamline processes and prevent future delays in implementation. Monali, failure to commission implemented projects. We go to page eight, Chair. Cause of query, management would like to clarify that ZESCO had not completed, connected power to Mten dele East Clinic and Grips Clinic, which led to the delay of the commissioning of the projects. Action taken, management wishes to state that ZESCO has since connected power to the two facilities and is scheduled for commissioning in the month of April 2025. Remedial measure, management wishes to report that a resolution has been meant by the CDF to include solar power in all CDF construction projects. This will serve as a backup mechanism and also expedite the timely commissioning of completed projects where ZESCO does not install power on time. Uncommunistic projects, Kamanga Police Post. Cause of query, management wishes to report that at the time of the audit, the construction of the police post was complete but was not financed. Hence, the facility could not be commissioned. Action taken, management wishes to state that the furniture for the facility has since been procured and the police post has now been commissioned and is operational. Remedial measure, management wishes to report that going forward, all constructions contracts for vertical buildings will include the furniture. Material, workmanship of projects. One by three classroom block at Yotam Mreya Primary School. Cause of query, management wishes to report that this was as a result of the building, which developed cracks during the defects habilit period. Management has action taken, management wishes to report that an instruction was issued to the contractor to remedy the defects and that the defective walls have since been worked on. Remedial measure, management wishes to report that to ensure that the council carries out increased site inspection so as to ensure that the contractor follow contract specifications. Construction of a one by three block at the Sai Community School. Cause of query, management wishes to report that this was as a result of the building, which developed defects during the defect habilit period. With the passage of time, the ceiling developed some cracks, leading to lighting, light fittings loosening. Management wishes to report that the building is still under defect habilit period and an instruction was ensured to the contractor to remedy the defects and the ceiling board has since been removed and a new one has been installed. Remedial measure, management will ensure that the council carries out increased site inspections so as to ensure that the contractor follow contract specifications. Construction of Chunga Clinic. Cause of query, management acknowledges the observations made by the auditor and wishes to report that the cause of the query was as a result of the underperformance of the contractor, which resulted in the delay of completing the project. Action taken, management wishes to report that an instruction was issued to the contractor and the contractor has since corrected the defects, which are the surrounding, undercoats, painting and also installation of two glue doors, and the project has since been completed. Remedial measure, management will ensure that council carries out increased site inspection so as to ensure contractors follow the contract inspection. Kawata constituency, delayed completion of paving at Chilenge Market. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observations and wishes to report that the delay was primarily due to the clearing period required of the pavers to the delivery on site and the section of the paved area was fitted with a, which was fitted with a defective batch that succumbed to wear and tear quicker than the anticipated lifespan. Action taken, management wishes to report that the council instructed the contractor to replace the defective pavers and the contractor has successfully replaced the 1,400 square meters of the affected area on the concrete edge on the western side of the market. The project is still under the defects habilit period. Remedial measure, management will ensure that the council will cut out increased site inspections so as to avoid such, or ensure that the contractor follow the laid down specifications in the contract document. Delayed completion of a construction of a boundary wall fence at Rili Primary School. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observations and wishes to report that the contractor was forced to stop works because of an active land dispute. The contractor had done ninety-five percent of the contract work, but the side works were demolished by Rili Seventh Day Advantage State and is urgent and petitioned ownership on part of the land being enclosed by the boundary wall at the Lusaka District through the planning appeals board. Management wishes to report that, that wishes to report that a report was then filed with Chilanga Police Station under a case reference number 48 stroke five stroke 2023. Further, an enforcement notice was served on the SDH on third June, third of June of 2024 to demolish the wall fence that was built illegally by the letter during the period of police investigation. The Planning Appeals Tribunal dismissed the appearance, appeal, but nonetheless, the matter was recommended by the SDA for proceedings in the High Court with regards to ownership. Remedial measure, the management in future will assert that all land dislocated for construction of CDF projects is indeed the property of the project or project owner prior to the initiation of the project implementation phase. Mandevu, delayed completion of projects. So we go to page fifteen, Chair. Cause of query, construction of a one by three CRAB at Mombé Primary School. Management acknowledges observation of the audit and wishes to report that this was due to the contractors repeated work that were unsatisfactory, leading to the delay in the completion of the project. Action taken, management wishes to report that the contract duration was extended to ensure that the contract was still running as stipulated in the condition of the contract. The project has since been completed and was handed over on sixth February 2025. Remedial measure, management is committed to ensuring that the CDF management system to improve efficiency, streamline processes and prevent future delays in the implementation. And cause of query, installation of cow vets at Angel's Corner. Management acknowledges auditor's observation and wishes to state that this was due to the area being waterlogged. To mitigate that rock filling and watering of the site by the contractor had to be done before the commencement of the drainage construction. Action taken, management wishes to report that the construction of Angel's Corner Drainage has since been completed. Remedial measure, management is committed to enhancing the CDF management system to improve efficiency, streamline processes and prevent future delays in the implementation. B, abandoned projects with conflict of interests. A construction of mother shelter at Mandevu Clinic. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to report that the cause of the query was as a result of contractor Inosight Investment Limited abandoning the site and could not complete the works on time. abandoning the site and could not complete the works on time. Management also wishes to report that at the time of the what the side director, assistant director was not an employee of Usaka City Council. Action taken, management wishes to report that the contract for Inosight Investment, Investment Limited was terminated and the demand letter was written to recover with the advance payment that was meant for the works, which were not done and the new contractor is being procured to complete the works. Management has since written a demand notice to the contractor to recover amount owed through advance and the damages charged. Usaka Central, delayed completion of project, cause of query, management acknowledges the observation made by the auditor and wishes to report that there was an additional extension to accommodate their outstanding, outstanding works, which included the change of scope of steel for the cells from Y sixteen to Y twenty, paving over the front of the police station, construction of shelves in the cell area, which, which has led to the delayed completion of the project. Further, an inspection by the designated user recommended an enhancement in the design and security features, which are attainable at an incremental cost of seven hundred and forty thousand and have since been secured from Usaka Central and awaiting approval. Action taken, management wishes to report that a site meeting was called with Zambia Police, Minister of Home Affairs and Internal Security and also with Usaka Central CDF to discuss the changes after, which authority has been sought from P O G O's office requesting for extra funds to implement it, they requested extra works. Remedy or measure, management will ensure that it takes the variation request to the CDC on time so that projects are not over delayed. Irregularities in the procurement of desks, Kanyama. So, failure to replace rejected desks, so cause of query, management wishes to acknowledge that observation of the auditor and, management wishes to acknowledge the observation of the auditor and wishes to report that the council only paid for desks that were delivered while the rejected ones were not paid for. Action taken, management wishes to state that an instruction was issued to the supplier to replace the rejected MDF desk with Mukwa desk. The seventy five desk MDF were not received by the supplier citing increasing prices on the market, however, the council further procured the two hundred and thirteen school desks using part of the funds from the unpaid seventy five desk. The two hundred and thirteen desks have since been delivered. Remedy or measure, management, in order to guarantee that only high quality products are supplied, will continue to conduct inspections prior to product delivery and will also follow up on the rejected items, make sure that they are delivered on schedule. Monali, failure to avail the goods notes, goods received notes. Cause of query, on page twenty, management wishes to acknowledge the observation of the auditor and wishes to state that some of the documents were secured at the point of delivery schools and not at the council during the time of audit. Action taken, management wishes to report that the goods received notes are available for audit verification. Remedy or measure, management wishes to report that going forward, the necessary documents will be made available as early as possible to the auditors. Then, they, Natung General Dealers delaying delivery of this, cause of query, management wishes to acknowledge that observation made by the external auditor and wishes to report that the delay in the delivery of this was due to the supplier facing power outages in the area where they operate from, leading to an approved extension of time to the contractor, which ultimately culminated in the delay in the delivery of this. Action taken, management wishes to report that the supplier delivered the two hundred and eighty five discs at a total sum of three hundred and nine from which the advance payment of one zero three was fully covered and the contract was terminated. Remedy or measure, management wishes to report that going forward, it to continue to cut out due diligence of the supplier before the delivery of discs. Failure to terminate the contract, cause of query, management wishes to acknowledge observation made by the auditor and wish to report that this was due to the consideration of the communication from the contractor at the time of the audit to complete the due process as per terms and conditions. Action taken, management wishes to report that the contract has since been terminated. Remedy or measure, management has intensified in the conducting of due diligence on all suppliers of products and services to the council in order to, to determine their ability to deliver the, the goods. Non-delivery of borax, William General Dealers, cause of query, management would like to state that the supplier did not have sufficient capacity to fulfill the delivery of the six hundred borax within the designated timeframe, however, provision of ninety school desks and forty laboratory tools were successfully delivered. Management wishes to state that the supplier delivered a total of eighty four borax and the contract agreement was terminated as a result of the contractor's inability to provide the desk within the designated time period. Remedy or measure, management has since appointed the contract manager who will be following up on contractors so that they monitor the quality of sezeze being provided and ensure that the supplier deliver on time. So on page twenty two, payment of skills to training and registers, this one was resolved. Then we go to B, which is on page twenty three, sponsorship of an approved beneficiaries, Kawata constituency, cause of query, management wishes to report that the auditors observed that the council paid the tuition fees to Wa Sange, Travie and Twas for two students, then BH Technical College for nineteen and Usaka Business twelve students to pursue various development skills under Kawata. Action taken, management wishes to state that all the recipients of the buzz are is at the three cited institutions under Kawata were approved to undertake the programs. Approval lists, letters from the school and payment vouchers are availed for auditor verification. Remedy or measure, management will enhance the reconciliation between the council and the learning institutions to ensure effective and accurate information is maintained. Student without proof of completing skills courses, cause of query, management wishes to report that the students at the time of the audit were still attending the classes and had not yet completed their courses as some courses had more than a year duration. Action taken, management wishes to state that all students cited as not having completed their program have since completed and graduated their courses. Remedy or measure, management will continuously monitor the progress of the student at various institutions. D, questionable payments for skills at non-operating training centers, cause of query, management wishes to clarify that at the time of payment, Vavika Training Academy was operational and registered with technical education and vocational and entrepreneurship training, which is Taveta. Action taken, management wishes to report that on twenty fourth May, the council came across a letter from Taveta regarding the cancellation of Vavika Training Academy registration certificate. The council through the legal department issued a legal demand notice for recovery of funds amounting to nine hundred and thirteen thousand. Remedy or measure, management will continuously monitor the skills training institutions will continue to cut out due diligence before and after paying for the students. Management of youth, women empowerment grants, failure to avail registration certificates, cause of query, management acknowledges observation of the audit and wishes to report that the council did not avail registration certificate at the time of audit because the application forms were not maintained at, as, as distinctive documents attached to the payment voucher's body filed separately at the district planning unit. Action taken, management wishes to state that the registration certificate that were not available for audit verification are available for audit verification. Remedy or measure, management will ensure that all documents that are required by the auditor are made available promptly. Disagreements of grants to unknown applicants, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation, report that at the time of the audit inspection, some of the grants beneficiaries were not reachable on phone numbers indicated on the application form. Management wishes to report that it was able to contact the grants beneficiaries through the WDCs and councils. The council conducted monitoring exercises and the reports are available for audit verification. Remedy or measure, management will continue to monitor the grant beneficiaries and update the contact details if and when need arises, in the event of change of details like phone number and address. Failure to produce monitoring post empowerment grants, cause of query, management would like to acknowledge the auditor's observation with regret that the, the, the auditors were not available with the monitoring post during the audit and wishes to report that there were inadequate staff in the monitoring and evaluation in the unity at the time of the audit. Action taken, management wishes to report that it has provided additional staff to the M and E section under the district planning unit and that the monitoring posts that were not available for, audits are now available for audit verification. Management will continue to monitor the empowerment grants, beneficiaries and update the contact details if and when needs arises. And delayed submission of empowerment grants for approval, cause of query, management regrets that the delayed submission of the grant application for approval was delayed in the year twenty twenty two due to the delay in the submission of the what, WDC as well as the late launch of the CDF grants in the year February twenty twenty two, which automatically culminated in the late submission of the grants to the CDF. Action taken, management wishes to report that the submission of grants for approval have since been aligned according to CDF guidelines, which supplants that submissions must not be met, not later than the first quarter of each year. Remedy or measure, management will ensure that in order to await potential delays in the submissions of projects, it has subsequently instituted the following strategic measures, prompt advertisement regarding the grants, applications, rigorous submission timelines and the ongoing monitoring of project progress. Kanyama, constituency, failure to implement funded projects, Hope of Change Cooperative. Cause of query, management wishes to report that the Hope of Change Cooperative opted to change the business into village banking without consulting the local authority about the change of their business. This was due to a liable supply. Action taken, management wishes to report that the cooperative was formally written to, to refund the dispensed funds. Remedy or measure, management will ensure that it continues to sanitize the beneficiaries and monitor their operations as per requirement of the CDF guidelines. Chawama, unprofitable cooperative. Cause of query, management wishes to acknowledge the auditor's observation that the Paroti MPC ventured into fish business contrary to the approved business of sausage making and the cooperative was not operating at the time of audit. Action taken, management wishes to report that the cooperative was formally written to, to refund the dispensed funds. Remedy or measure, management will continue to monitor the activities of beneficiaries in order to assess the performance of the beneficiaries and take corrective action on time basis. Mandevu, failure to implement projects, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation and clarifies that the issue arose because of the groups who were not operational at the time of the audit. Action taken, management wishes to state that the council has formally written to the groups requesting a refund of the defense investment funds, additionally, the groups have been notified of their blacklisting from future CDF empowerment grants if they don't comply. Remedy or measure, management will ensure, will enhance physical verifications of applications so that they are traceable and also provide financial retracing training of the shortlisted groups. Soft loans, payment of soft loans to beneficiaries not on the approved list, cause of query, management wishes to report that this was as a result of the approved list and CDF minutes were not available to the auditor as were kept in separate files. Action taken, management wishes to report that the CDF minutes endorsed by the committee and the provincial law government P O G O approval list are available for audit verification. Remedy or measure, management will ensure that all the beneficiaries are, are approved before they are paid. Failure to produce monitoring post, cause of query, management would like to acknowledge auditor's observation with a regret that the auditors were not available with the monitoring post during the audit and wishes to report that there were inadequate staff in the M and E unit at the time of auditing. Action taken, management wishes to report that it has provided additional staff to the M and E section under the district planning units and that the monitoring post that were not available for audit are now available for audit verification. Remedy or measure, management will, will continue to monitor the empowerment grants, beneficiaries and update the contact details if and when need arises. Overpayment of loans, Kanyama, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to report that this was as a result of the bank that acted on its vetted list instead of the submission from the council, which led to an overpayment of fifteen thousand. Action taken, management would like to report that the council has written to the bank to notify them of the overpayment of fifteen thousand, however, the recoveries are being deducted from the beneficiaries based on the total amount of eighty thousand that was paid to the two beneficiaries and not the sixty five that was approved and the total recoveries at the first, the first January twenty twenty five for Dambay, Dambay Enterprise Council recovered sixteen thousand and Sithia Kalunga Council recovered nineteen thousand. Remedy or measure, management will ensure that the CDF committee sits on time basis and, and council will verify the payments that are made by Zanako. Unaccounted assets for Chawama, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to report that the processing unit was in the environmental planner office at the time of audit. Action taken, management wishes to report that the processing units are available for audit verification and it is in the environmental planners office. Action taken, remedy or measure, management will, in, in future, avail the auditors with the documents and assets as soon as they are requested for. Failure to provide proof, proof of tax compliance vetting before payment to suppliers, cause of query. Cause of query, management acknowledges that the auditors findings and this was due to uncertainty regarding Losaka City Council's designation as a VAT withholding agent under the Z R I A twenty twenty three withholding V A T agent list. Additionally, Treasury and Financial Management Secura Number Seven of twenty twenty three limited the directive to line ministries, government departments, and statutory bodies excluding local authorities such as Losaka City Council. Action taken, upon review, management confirms that Losaka is not under listed as a registered VAT withholding agent in the Z R I A twenty twenty three list of designated agents. However, the council has written to Z R I A notifying them of all the transactions involving suppliers engaged for the supply of goods and services for the year under review. The major measure, the council will take necessary steps to ensure compliance with applicable laws and regulations. Unsupported payments mandevu. Cause of query, the management acknowledges the observation of the auditor and wishes to report that this was due to tax clearance certificates that were not attached to the payment voucher but kept separately in the procurement office. Action taken, management has attached the documents that were not attached to the payment voucher at the time of audit. The major measure. Management will ensure that payments are vouchers are fully supported before filing. So go page thirty eight, appendixes eh budget funding expenditure eh cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation regarding the allocation and utilization of the funds. The retained funds of hundred and one seven seventy nine constituency were held by the means of law government and housing for central procurement of CDF vehicles for all the seven constituencies. Additionally, delays in fund disbursement and project completion were due to late formation of WDCs, which slowed down projects approvals. Action taken, using the retained funds, the means of law government procured and delivered the CDF vehicles, which are now in use across all seven constituencies to support service delivery and project implementation. The formation of the WDC has also significantly improved project approval processes, ensuring faster fund disbursements and better project execution. Expenditure reports have been prepared and submitted for audit verification. The major measure, management will continue monitoring fund utilization, strengthening coordination with means of law government, and providing support to WDCs to enhance project approval, timely fund disbursements, legal monitoring also be maintained to improve financial accountability. Total and spent funds eh cause of query, eh balance brought forward, management would like to state that the balance brought forward involved funds that were brought forward from the year twenty twenty two when the WDCs were formed, which resulted in the delays of submission approve submission approval projects and completion of projects as answered in interest. Management would like to state that the interest totaling of four million eh three hundred and thirty three eh as two zero one was limited to control ninety nine as per financial regulations. And spent funds, management would like to state that the spent funds as a result of some projects and skills buzzers covering a duration of more than one year as above delaying the submission of empowerment grants for approval. Action taken, management wishes to clarify that there was a total of outstanding balance of hundred and one million hundred thousand one forty two as at eh thirty first December twenty twenty three and council paid a total of nine ninety nine million ninety two thousand quata and sixty seven quata, which left a total balance of eh one point nine as at thirty first December twenty twenty four. The major measure, management will ensure that funds are used within the same financial year that funds are received. And spent funds community projects. Cause of query, management wishes to report that the WDC who are the recipients of the W CDF applications were elected late in June twenty twenty two and as such, this led to the delay in the application and submission process, which commited in failing to complete the project on time in twenty twenty three. Action taken, management wishes to clarify that there was an outstanding balance of eighty million eight thirty nine four fifty seven for community projects as at thirty first December and council paid a total of eighty million two fifty seven, which left a balance of five hundred thousand as at thirty first December twenty twenty four. The major measure, management will ensure that funds are used within the same financial year they are received. And spent funds empowerment. Management wishes to report that the WDC who are the recipients eh of the CDF applications were elected were elected late in June twenty twenty two and such, this led to the delay in the application and submission process. Action taken, management wishes to clarify that there was an outstanding balance of hundred and sixty three thousand eight sixty five for the empowerment as at twenty twenty three, council paid out all the one sixty three eight sixty four, which left a a new balance as at thirty first December. The major measure, management will ensure that funds are used within the same financial year that the funds are received. Eh then and spent funds empowerment grant eh I beg your pardon chair, we go to page forty two, secondary school boarding and skills buzzers. Management reports that the unspent funds resulted in a low turnout of students registering for the skills and secondary school buzzers during the period under review. Additionally, the funds were not dispensed at the time as the council was in the process of oppressing students in schools. Action taken, management wishes to clarify that there was an outstanding balance of sixteen million eight hundred and two eight hundred quata for the secondary school boarding and skills as at thirty first December and council paid a total of fifteen million, which left a balance of of one point three as at thirty first December twenty twenty four. The major measure, management will ensure funds are used within the same financial year that the funds are received. And spent funds administrative costs. Cause of query, management wishes to respond to report, management reports that the unspent funds were due to the council still utilizing the twenty twenty two administrative component for the project monitoring at the time of audit. Action taken, management wishes to clarify that there was an outstanding balance of three point two eh two hundred and ninety four twenty quata for the administrative courses at thirty first December twenty twenty three and council paid out three million two hundred and twenty six, which left a balance of thirty four thousand quata as at thirty first December twenty twenty four. Management to ensure that the remedy measures, management to ensure that funds are used within the same financial year it's received. Appendix three, community projects eh cause of query, management would like to state that unfinished projects were for the purchase of the land at Katambala Market and the construction construction of an ablation at the same market. However, the Katam however, the seller altered the selling price from what was originally agreed upon with the council and the new price was higher than government valuation department's value. Action taken, management has written to the P O G O office for council to purchase the above land above GDVC threshold. The major measure, management will continue to adhere to distributed rules and regulations. Analysis of performance of youth, women and community grants. Cause of query, management reports that the spent funds resulted from cooperatives failing to submit the necessary documents as required by the CDF guidelines. As a result, the cooperatives were instructed to resubmit the required documents before payment could be processed. Action taken, management wishes to report that there was a hundred percent dispensment for five constituencies, ninety nine percent for ninety nine percent dispensment for five for ninety nine and also constituencies eh eighty one percent dispensment for eight eighty one and then constituencies as at thirty first December twenty twenty four. The major measure, management will always pay funds promptly to ensure that communities get the intended benefit on a timely basis. Change of projects without approval. Cause of query, eh management would like to clarify that the beneficiaries eh received less funding than the amount the original applied for in accordance with the resolution passed by the CDF. Action taken, management wishes to state that it has formally cautioned the beneficiaries again against changing projects without prior approval. The major measure, management wishes to report that means of law government has guided all local authorities through a secular stating that non-CDF should reduce the applied amounts by the beneficiaries. Performance analysis of loans. Management would like like to state that the loans are demand driven and the utilization of the funds is dependent on the uptake of these loans by the community and as such, the demands from the community failed to exhaust the funds. Action taken, management wishes to report that it successfully increased the allocations for soft loans from a zero percent where no beneficiary received funds in certain constituencies to eighty five percent. The major measure, management has increased sensitization to the general public on their variability and how they can and how the public can access these funds. Failure to recover loans. Cause of query, management wishes to report that the beneficiaries who obtained loans from the council failed to repay their obligations within the agreed timelines with default periods ranging from six months to fourteen months. The failure to recover these loans is attributed to operational challenges faced by some cooperatives, which affected their financial capacity to meet repayment commitments. Action taken, to address this issue, management has made proactive in implementing loan recoveries. Regular reminders have sent have been sent to defaulters, aiding them to fulfill their loan obligations. As a result of this, a total of two million hundred thousand has been recovered as at thirty first December twenty twenty five. A status report detailing these recoveries has been prepared and attached for audit verification. The major measure, management remains committed to improving loan recovery and will continue to sensitize beneficiaries on the importance of paying repaying their loans. Secondary school boarding and skills development buzzers. Cause of query, management wishes to report that the students at the time of audit were still attending classes and had not yet completed their courses as some courses had more than one year duration. Action taken, management wishes to state that all students cited as not having completed their program have since completed and graduated their courses. The major measure, management will continuously monitor the progress of students at various institutions. Appendix twelve, beneficiaries of secondary school boarding skills development buzzers not pursuing skills development courses. Cause of query, management wishes to report that the query arose from the beneficiaries of the secondary school boarding and skill development buzzers not pursuing skills developed as intended. Some beneficiaries have opted for courses and related to the buzzery objectives such as social counseling and business administration rather than the technical and vocational programs that align with the skills development. Action taken, management wishes to report that a review of the course choices for the beneficiaries has been inserted and discussions with the students to ensure that they are aware of the importance of pursuing skills development program. Additional guidance and support are being provided to help beneficiaries align their studies with the intended purposes of the buzzers. The major measure, to prevent this from happening in future, management has strengthened the monitoring for the course selection to ensure that beneficiaries are enrolled in courses that are directly contribute to skills development. Further, no irregular follow-ups and checks will be conducted to track the progress of students and ensure the courses align with the buzzers objectives. Analysis of performance of desk. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation on the council failure to procure the desk as approved by the CDF in the year under review. Action taken, managers wishes to report that the council had the balance of about ten thousand and delivered desk as at thirty first December eh twenty twenty three during the under review eh. The council delivered the desk and here, sir chairman, allow me to amend the report that the desks were delivered, were only remaining with a balance of seven hundred and seventy eh of a delivered desk, which will be delivered by thirty first April this month. The major measure, management has appointed the contract manager who manage the contracts and ensure that all the rivers are within the contract period. Delivery of substandard discs. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation regarding the provision of substandard discs by the supplier, which were identified by the technical committee at the time of delivery and the supplier delayed in replacing these credit discs. Action taken, management wishes to state that the substandard discs had been replaced by high quality discs that met the specification set forth by the council. The major measure, management has started to conduct due diligence by inspecting the discs at the workshop so as to avoid the supply of substandard substandard discs to the council. Failure to monitor projects. Cause of query, management would like to acknowledge the auditor's observation with a regret that the M and E staff were inadequate during the year under review, which resulted in the then failing to monitor some projects. However, as stated in the above query, failure to produce monitoring force and that the monitoring force that were not available for audit are now available available for audit verification. Action taken, management wishes to report that it has provided additional staff to the M and E section under the DPU and that the monitoring posts that were not available for audit are now available. The major measure, management will continue to monitor community projects, empowerment, and buzzers with additional manpower. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Town Clerk, for the elaborate presentation. It's been a long one. Um, the beauty is that um most of the honourable members, we read the reports in the night and I think we 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 are ready for interaction. Um, the time is about eleven, I request that we break for tea. Um the time is about eleven, I request that we break for tea. We shall start our engagement after tea break. The meeting is adjourned for tea break.